And welcome and thank you for taking the time to tune into our meeting of the Select Board of September 11, 2023. Before we begin this meeting, I'd like to remember those lost their lives during the attack that we had on September 11, 2001, and their families as well. We honor their memories and also the bravery of those who responded to those attacks. It's been 22 years since, and it was the worst attack that we ever had when it came to a total of deaths on American soil ever, and we will never forget. Anyway, thank you for that. And also, I'd like to begin the meeting by first approving the signing of the warrant. Do I have a motion for that?
I make a motion, we sign the warrant, Mr. Chairman.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I'd also like a motion to approve the minutes of our regular scheduled meeting of August 28, 2023.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 28, 2023, Mr. Chairman.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Also, the executive session minutes of August 28, 2023.
And I make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes of August 28, 2023.
Thank you for that, Michael.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm in favor of that also, unanimous. Next on the agenda is public hearings, and we have none. Also, on our agenda is, Mike, can I see your paper right here for one second? Okay, thank you. Is a, we have a scheduled appointment with Finance Director Zach Taylor, as well as our Parks Director James Azim. They'll be here to discuss the Community Development Block Grant to be used to renovate Town Park and use ARPA funds for a supplemental project. Thank you, Mike. Gentlemen, thank you for coming, and in your honor.
Thank you. So, obviously, we're here tonight to talk about our town receiving 1.324 million-dollar project for renovations at Town Park. This was done with Metro City, Resident Milford, myself, and Rick. And I can't say enough about the work that Mitch had done to get this grant drawn up as fast as we had to. There was a lot of work, and for this community block grant, they require a lot of information, information that normally would take months and months to get, and we did it in, you know, half that. And Mitch was unbelievable, and, you know, unfortunately, he couldn't make it tonight. Joe Arcuti was gonna make it tonight also. He got stuck in up north for some storms they had, so he was unable to come too. But I just want to, you know, give Mitch a lot of credit for the work that he did, working with me and Rick to get this money approved. We're planning on using this money with other funds and a town appropriation during this upcoming town meeting. So for the funding side, I'll let Zach take that.
Sure, thank you, Jim. So I just handed out a document to you folks. It gives the total estimated cost, which was put together while the grant was put out by a consultant firm that provided documentation and an estimate at the high end of 2.6. So that's what we're using for this analysis. As Jim mentioned, the CDBG grant is 1.324, which is fantastic. It's, again, Mitch did a great job with that, everyone did, this should be celebrated. To supplement that, because the Parks Commission does want to do the whole plan, we don't want to do a portion of it just to meet the grant. There's no, there's no actual, just to put it out there, there's no actual requirement to match this, so when you're looking at this, this isn't a required match, but it's more to try to complete the project as was fully visioned by the Parks Department. And in order to do so, and I know I spoke to you individually months ago about this, I think a real good opportunity would be to appropriate the remaining amount that we have outstanding from the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, which was a federal grant award. Currently, we have $538,325.70 available. Typically, I would round the numbers, but we don't want to be writing a check back for pennies, so I would suggest to the board at this time that we supplement this grant with the federal ARPA funds for that amount. And further, just before you contemplate doing so, as I mentioned, 2.6 is the total total amount. If you add those two, the state grant and the federal grant together, it's short by $737,000, in which the Parks Commission currently has a placeholder on for the special town meeting to do the final appropriation. So those three funding sources together would complete this significant project.
Yeah, like I said, I remember back in January, I remember when Mitch was here, and the Select Board gave him the green light to go ahead because we thought it was a very worthwhile project in improving the parks, and also improves Milford itself. And there's nothing more important than the parks that we have today. It's our hidden gem. I mean, more and more recreation activities for our young folks, more physical activities for the older folks to get more healthy and whatnot. I mean, the park isn't what it used to be years and years ago. It's much more used and it's much more treasured, really, I mean, for a town. I was gonna say too, I mean, if you're gonna be doing just a town park, you know, you're not really doing the whole thing, like you were just saying, Zach and Jimmy. We have to go through the whole, full, the full project. And to cover the other parks that we have, like the Pearl Street basketball courts and whatnot, that's all part of the program. That all probably, that would enhance Milford itself. I remember Rick being quoted in the news, saying that it's, it would complement walkways, update fencing and lighting, build new basketball courts, and outdoor exercise centers. It'll also build new ADA compliant walkways as well, which is getting us into the, through a decade of the 21st century. It's something that we really need, and I really appreciate the work that Mitch did very much, so we all do, my two colleagues as well, which is why we gave them the green light to go ahead back in January. Also, Rick and Jim, with your help with this grant and whatnot, and Zach with your guidance, we couldn't be in better hands. Anyway, thank you for that. Any board member would like to?
I think financially, this is a huge win. You know, the grant's coming in at just over 50%. You're using the ARPA funds 20%, you're asking for roughly 30%. 30% to accomplish something this large is, that's a win. Especially today, when you look at the financial picture out there. And we're not talking just Town Park, we are talking as well, the area across from the youth center, correct?
Right, so the, so the area across from the youth center was incorporated in all of this, it isn't part of the block grant, but it will be part of the other funding.
Precisely.
And that's, yes, and that's gonna include basketball court with fencing, additional parking. So there used to be two basketball courts there, there's gonna be one now. We'll have, we've figured about 14 to 18 parking spaces, which is gonna take off the curse for the parking for the youth center, for Town Hall, we'll be able to use it during town meetings and things like that, which it's used now, but we're just gonna make it real long.
Makes it better, yeah.
And then there'll be a picnic area or something too, so the youth center's gonna board, I think the whole downtown's gonna benefit from it. But that's how that will be incorporated into the Town Park project.
So portion of that 30%, as well as the ARPA funds.
Correct.
Is to accommodate two projects.
Yes, sure.
It's not just the one. And Town Park, you know, as my friend the chairman indicated, that, you know, that is the gem, that's the original park, as far as I know, and up in the middle 40, and I'm sure I'll get new information as soon, as soon as I leave the meeting. But, you know, when you look at the history of Town Park, and we discussed it in that last meeting with Mitch and others, I just think this is a super, super win, and I congratulate Metro City, I do. He, he did a fantastic job in pulling this together. He's a very, very, very capable, bright person who loves this town. He made a difference, and he served on the Downtown Revitalization Committee, and now is the town administrator in Hope Dale. Nevertheless, he's a great resource and someone that I will always look to, based upon his knowledge and, you know, just the information he can give you. But I want to thank both of you, because, and Rick, I'm sorry, you as well, for all the work you did with him in pulling this together. This is a super win. And we're talking 1 point, almost 1.3 million dollars. That's a super win.
Sure is.
So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I think they did a fantastic job.
Thank you, Tom. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was thinking about this when I, when I saw this in the packet over the weekend, and, you know, we get text messages, there are things posted on Facebook, and we get emails anytime that there's something negative. But we never get anything when something very positive like this comes out, and this is, this is what I focus on. And this is, to me, just a great example of how not only the department heads, the departments, the people in Town Hall, the department heads within Town Hall, all work together on a daily basis to improve this community. And it's just another example, and, you know, yeah, Mitch is very talented at what he does, you gentlemen, the same thing. And people need to know this, and it's just sad that there are people that focus on the negative and don't focus on the positive, because this is what I focus on, the improvements that are continually made to this community. Because we have good people like yourselves in the roles that they should be in, and that's our area of responsibility, is to make sure that we have the right people in those roles. Obviously, we do, you know. You know, Zach, you know the town is financially very strong, you know, it's, it's just, there's so many more positive things that go on in this community every single day that we just don't focus on, you know, and we really should. And I just want to say thank you to everybody, you know, who works together in this community on a daily basis to make this community the great place that it is, you know, not only recreationally wise to live in, and is why, you know, as well. And I just want to say thank you, great, great job, and, you know, to everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need a vote, Rick?
We're gonna need a motion to approve the use of that amount in ARPA funds to be applied to the project. Is that correct, Zach?
Yes, the 538.
The 538, okay.
I would ask the board that in the motion, if you would include both Town Park and Pearl Street, the reporting of ARPA is very, very strict, so I want to make sure I cover myself.
Okay, sure. So if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, but I, you know, I do want to thank Governor Mara Healy, Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, and the Secretary at Augustus, as well as Representative Brian Murray, and our Senator Rebecca Rousch, for, you know, their involvement in this and helping move on, and for them to recognize that Milford, we do things, we do them right, you know, and so we look at a project, and what we tell you we'll have done, it'll be done. And we have the people behind it as we see time that'll make sure that's the case. So I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the grant for 1.1 million, 324,037 dollars from the Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant through the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. I'll do it in a couple motions.
Okay. Michael, second that motion to accept the grant?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman, gladly.
And I make that unanimous to accept the grant.
And I make a motion that we allow the Finance Director to utilize $538,325.70 for purposes of revitalization of the Town Park and Pearl Street basketball courts to supplement the grant from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
And that will come from the ARPA funds as well?
Yes, from the ARPA funds.
Excuse me, Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous, thank you very much, and again.
That's sufficient.
Excellent job.
That's sufficient, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
And if I, since I'm here, I'd like to give you guys sort of an update of some of the things that we've been doing in the park and the people that mentioned tonight. There's been, you know, a lot of construction going on, and I just feel, we do have a post on the website of the different construction sites, but, you know, we've had some projects completed, so I just figured I'd update you guys on that if you can take an extra few minutes.
Sure.
A long way to pool construction, we are working right now to get that started. We just actually today received the confirmation of the contracts being reviewed, so we'll be able to move forward with that once the contract is signed by the company that'll be doing the work, and then we'll go through the approval process for that, and we'll be up and going for the pools. So we're shooting for June of '24, which would be a nice gold date, and, you know, get the kids back in the pool, it's gonna be a really nice facility. And you guys have seen pictures and stuff, but as we go through the project, well, you know, I'll keep you guys updated in the process and, you know, everyone that wants to hear about it. So Plains Park, if you've been down there, there's been some construction down there after 21 years, the sidewalks sort of sink, started to sink. So we had appropriated money last town meeting for $90,000 to fix those walkways. They've since been fixed. We're, they're looking to do the outer edge of the walkway, the northern side of the park. And once they do the finished work, we'll hydroseed it, and they used the field, actually, this past weekend, the youth did. But we'll have that all done, the construction fence will be taken down, and we'll be good to go there. Something looking forward, another year, we're looking to do the other half.
Beautiful.
It wasn't as bad, so we chose the worst first, and then heard them over, so it'll only be, you know, months in between the two being done, so if it needs to be done another 10 or 15 years, it can get done completely. Rosenfeld Park, glazing ball fields, you might have noticed the work that's being done down there. And that's all through the 50% density bonus with Afonsel Builders from that for the project up off of Bear Hill. And that's all coming together. The lighting and fencing will be all done there, so the lighting, old light poles have been taken down, the new Musco light poles have been delivered. We're waiting for the company to come in, they tell me this week, so those will be get drilled, installed. There'll be four, four poles at each field, Musco lighting, like we have at Fino Field and up at the schools.
Great.
So that's gonna be a big addition. And then all the fencing, all new fencing. We're, we're cutting off some of the fencing and using existing posts, because the posts are in great shape, but it's a pretty big renovation of all the fencing.
Absolutely, very well needed, very good.
That'll all come through Afonsel Builders, that 50% density that goes back in 2018. So that all came around. That was sort of held up through COVID, but, you know, because Dominic wasn't building at the time, but now everything's up. So hopefully, that's done by the end of the month.
Beautiful.
Great. Fino Field Annex, you might have noticed down there, then you have fencing around the whole thing, so unfortunately, when we had the carnival there, they had, I think, two of the five days, or two of the four days that they were there, it rained pretty hard. So the field took a beating, and, but the carnival, you know, from their agreement, paid for it all, so we had a company come in and do the work, some of the irrigation had to be replaced. So we felt just instead of seeding it and letting pop water all over it, that we would move pop water to Fino Field. They're using the outfield at Fino Field for their practices, and we closed down the annex. It hasn't been a huge, I don't give many permits to the annex smaller groups, and there is a smaller section they're able to still use, but we're sort of juggling teams around, we're using that outfield at Town Park, and we're using the outfield at Fino Field to sort of, fields that we don't normally use for practice purposes, so that, that should be done. We're probably gonna hold off another month or so with that, because we want to do some additional top dressing and seeding, and get it all watered, so we actually have grass that's established. It doesn't take too long, but I just want to make sure it's established. So that's some of the upgrades coming down there along with the pool, so it'd be nice seeing the whole complex come together. Up at the Heights, new ADA compliant playground, we had installed with the rubber matting, the ADA compliant rubber matting. There were some concerns with safety up there, I had the playground company come in and sort of take a look, and he says, yeah, this is no good. There was a lot of, there was the older wooden playground that was there, and it was beautiful when it was updated.
Right.
We kept, we did keep one apparatus, the climbing apparatus, that was still safe, and we replaced all the swings. So we have some paint, we're gonna be painting the additional, you know, the, the existing swing sets and stuff with red coloring that is there, it's just faded. So that hasn't been done, but the playground's been used, and from what I understand, everyone, you know, likes it, they've been using it a lot, so.
Good, great.
That, that was a great addition for up at the Heights. At Louisa Lake, the Lions Club donated $35,000 pavilion.
Fantastic, great.
And we brought that up quick, assisted Scott. Scott was able to get the pad down with a few other Lion Club members, you know, Brazzer and, you know, those guys all worked together to get it done. Scott had his guys down there excavating it all, and they all sort of worked together to get it done. Now that we have it up, we're working on the electrical side, so we just got DigSafe done, and hopefully this week with, you know, with the weather cooperating, we'll be able to dig the ditch for the electrical, go to the existing electrical that's there. That'll go right along the walkway, right to the corner, so it'll be electrical, just like the one down at Plains, and lighting. So we'll be, they'll start using that for more events, because if you go down there at night, that's black.
Black, yeah.
Completely black, you can't use it for anything, so hopefully, we'll be able to start giving permits for that pavilion and take it a little bit off of Plains Park, which is, Plains Park with soccer going on, you can't use that on Saturdays now, and it's nice to have this as a backup, so I have to thank the Lions Club, Lenny Marcone, and, you know, Mark Mann, those guys all, you know, were in on this to, you know, make sure we got this done. And, you know, it was, it was a great project, and it was fun to see it come up.
Sure.
They did it in a day and a half once the pad is done.
Wow.
You know, they came and just put it up, it's Amish company, and they all come, there's four guys, and they came in and put it up like nothing. So it's a really nice, and it looks nice from the road, it's really, really nice. And also at Louisa, the Garden Club planted some hostas along the pathway going to the gazebo in the front, so I have to thank, you know, the Garden Club, they're, they're awesome, they do so much for us. You know, starting with the wildflowers they've done across from Sacred Heart, to plantings at the Draper Park, they're all over the place, and they do such a great job, and I can't say enough about this, you know, I meet with them every once in a while just to let them know that, you know, we're happy with everything they do, so. And then the Cultural Council continues to contribute to things, and we have the Barrel Project Act, you know, the Art Barrel Project, they had a contest, and we've been using those in our parks, and, you know, fortunately, they've been doing really well, hasn't been any damage to them. They added the chess game table, chess checker, they put concrete one up at Town Park, in the rain garden. And they just recently put boards down at Louisa Lake on the existing tables, they came up with an idea to put game tables on those, they screwed them in, they're all covered with plastic, and they've attached playing pieces to each table. So you go down there, and you see kids playing checkers, and they're actually putting stuff all back in the containers too.
Beautiful, yeah.
That's great to see, because we didn't know how it was gonna work, they said, well, you know, they made the checkers out of wood and painted them, and, you know, they're gonna have to take another dowel and cut it and make up more, and it's easy.
That's great.
You know, but it's working out great down there. And then, last thing at Louisa Lake, the disc golf course. I'm here months back, you know, speaking to you guys about the disc golf course, and it's unbelievable.
Yeah.
It's beyond what I thought it would be.
Director, you had a world champ there.
Yes, yes, yes. So it's European world, European champ.
Okay.
Simon Lazzar, he was one of the designers.
Yeah.
He's playing on the pro tour now, but he, so there's an app, I explained to you guys, there's an app that people can use to score it, and this app tracks and gives me an update, so I'm able to give you guys an update on the amount of players, which I was amazed at the amount that's getting used, but for a nine-hole course, which is plays like in 18, so it's two baskets, we've averaged between 200 and 240 players per month.
Wow.
And that, that comes out to about 800 to 1,000 rounds being played down there. We haven't had any reports of any problem.
No.
The one thing is the parking lot that we've temporary lined, we're waiting for the drainage to be put in, we're not gonna pave it and then have the drainage put in after and dig everything up, it doesn't make sense. So with the work that we're doing down there, we put in 18 temporary painted spots, and on the weekends, the parking lot gets pretty much built up, you know, it's.
And that was only since the middle spring, I believe, right?
Right, so April, April was the event, yeah. And I play on the weekends at different tournaments throughout the state, and in New Hampshire or wherever, and people come up to me, and they know me from the videos when they're doing the course, and they go, oh, that course is unbelievable, we haven't played it.
Beautiful, good to hear.
It also tracks the states from where people come from. Last month, there was 16 people from 16 different states. Then it tracks new players, 17 players that use a new disc for the first time, 17, 25 players that are visiting it for the first time, so it's a really good stat to have, where I can track it and I can keep, and the ratings are 4.3 to 4.5 on the ratings out of five stars. So for a nine-hole course, that is high. Like normally, 18-hole courses get ratings like that, but in the disc golf world, nine holes are sort of like, yeah, I'm not gonna play it.
That's great, that's great.
So it's been really received well. I'm sure, like, the markets around Purchase Street and some of the businesses around must be noticing it, because it seems to be a lot of people coming in and out, you know, the store being right there for lunches or whatever, so, you know, I really, I really wanted to, you know, bring that up. And then, you know, just moving forward, you know, the months to come, years to come, the commissioners have a lot of plans for infrastructure, so we're looking to do all our parking lots, all of fencing in town. So we're gonna be putting that in for appropriations and, you know, coming town meetings for walkway improvements and parking lot improvements, because our parking lots, we can only patch so much. And, you know, that's between Plains Park, Rosenfeld, Louisa Lake, Fino Field, Lot Lot, all those parking lots that fall under the Parks jurisdiction.
Sure.
They're just overdue to be redone, so we put that in, you know, for appropriations in the capital plan moving forward, so that's something the commissioners will be, you know, looking to do in the next, for the next three to five years.
Well, this was a pleasant surprise, Jim, like I said, we didn't expect this, but I'm glad we did, because like I said, it's outstanding, the work that we, that you're doing, and like Mike was just saying too, I mean, we're doing a lot of good.
Yeah.
You know, you guys, you know, the different department heads, especially the parks, improving, maintaining what we have is, for longevity in years to come, is fantastic, and also adding new things, you know, so people can enjoy, and like I said, you're getting a lot of hits from that disc golf that you have down there, which I was there at the opening, and there were several people from different states just at the opening. I remember they were South Dakota, Texas, Arkansas, Alabama, they were, they came from all over, which was pretty impressive, and that says you're doing a great job, and we thank you for that, and like I say, Milford's a great town because of great leaders that we have, and it's something that people should be talking more about, you know, and, Michael, you were right with that too, with your statement that you made, lots going on from new pools to pavilions to, and we can go on and on and on, you know, so like I said, great job, and thank you for that.
Yeah, and I can't not thank my employees, they've been great, I mean, we have a lot of stuff going on, and with all these projects on top of that, we have a lot of grounds that we cover, and my guys have been great.
They have.
I have to give them a lot of credit for, you know, keeping up with the busy schedule we have, but, you know, everything, just like anywhere, it becomes routine, and, you know, they're accepting it well, so. So, you know, shout out to my guys, you know, great job.
Great job too.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks a lot.
Have a great night.
Great night.
Thanks, Jim. Talk to you tomorrow. Thanks, Jim. Nice job. Next on the agenda is Town Administrator's Report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three items tonight. First of all, the Milford Youth Center fundraiser will be this Friday, September 15th at Craft Roots Brewing at Four Industrial Road from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. This event helps sustain the free after-school programming, staffing and all other programs at the center, so we invite all to attend. I am pleased to report the Town of Milford has been awarded another grant, a $95,000 Stormwater MVP 2.0 Grant. MVP is Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. Highway Surveyor Scott Chris Affoli and Town Engineer Elizabeth Minini worked with our Town Stormwater Consultant Environmental Partners to apply for the grant. If you recall, this is the same program from which we received the grant to complete the stormwater infiltration system and stormwater wetlands at the Milford Town Park. This is a pilot program with the state and will require no match from the town. And the final item is our State Senator, Becca Roush, will be hosting a forum on Monday in Upper Town Hall, September 18th, 2023, beginning at 6:00 PM. The doors will open at 5:45 PM. She would like to invite residents to the forum to meet with her and her staff to discuss any topics of interest. So we welcome our residents in areas, surrounding town residents within her jurisdiction. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Rick. Anybody have any questions for Rick?
I do not.
No, Michael?
No.
Good, thanks. Next under, next item on the agenda is old business. Anybody have any old business?
I do not.
Michael?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
And we have the, next on the agenda is new business. One, okay. On the new business, we have an email from Deputy Chief Robert Tizino requesting a no parking sign to be installed on the west side of North Bow Street at the intersection of Main Street. And he has a, an email that he sent to Rick Valani, Town Administrator. Dear Mr. Valani, I respectfully request the Select Board approve signage and no parking on the west side of North Bow Street at the intersection of Main Street. Parking in this area causes a hazard when pulling out of Court Square onto North Bow Street. Any questions or concerns, we can let him know. You know, and we all know that too. I mean, when we're coming out of Court Square, coming out to North Bow Street, if there are cars parked close to the intersection, it's very difficult to see any car coming down. In fact, many a times I had a, the other cars had a slam on their brakes for me coming out. So any, any questions or concerns regarding this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept this.
I'd make a motion that we approve a no parking sign on the west side of North Bow Street in the intersection of Main.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'd make that unanimous. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a, an application for a one beer and wine license for the Double Tree Hotel for a banquet fundraiser to be held at the hotel at 11 Beaver Street in, in Milford, of course, on September 30th from 11:00 AM to 8:30 PM. And it, it's going to be beer and wine only and they expect a flow of a few hundred people flowing in and out.
Make a motion that we approve a one-day liquor license for beer and malt, the Double Tree, on September 30th from 11:00 AM to 8:30 PM.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And make that unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a request from Dale Winkler, scouting for food, a drive coordinator for a permit to obstruct, to use the municipal parking lot located next to the food pantry on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM to conduct their annual scouting food drive. And he has a note sent to the Milford Select Board. Dear Milford Select Board, I represent Milford Scouting Organization of Milford. As we begin preparations for this year's scouting for food drive, I would like to request your permission to use the municipal parking lot next to the Milford Food Pantry on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM to conduct our annual scouting for food drive and to support Milford, Milford's daily bread food pantry. Please note that the social distancing, personal protective equipment, PPE, group size and other public health guidelines from the state of Massachusetts, Boy Scout of America, Mayflower Council, as well as the Town of Milford will adhere to so that this important charity can be conducted safely. To this end, I am copying the Board of Health on these correspondence. As has been done in the past, I would like to arrange to put up some signs around town about a week prior to the November 4th donation collection date. They will be removed by the end of the day on, on, on the 4th. The Milford Police Cadets will make aware, will be made aware of the anticipated date to help us out with traffic control as they have done in the past. Thank you for your support to the community building efforts. And again, he also has a, a note from Chief Alvey. Our organizers will have to be, have to meet with Deputy Chief Tizino to work out safety plans that are agreeable and approved by him or his designee. So it seems to have everything in order and, but I guess he has done this in the past as well. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I don't, Mr. Chairman. This has occurred for many, many years and they have it well organized. They use the backside of the lot just behind the food pantry and the police explorers assist them in gathering food and making sure that it goes into the pantry and everybody is safe. And I, I know that the chief and the deputy have worked closely with them in the past.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion that we approve the, excuse me, permit to obstruct, to utilize the town lot, which is situated just behind the food pantry on November the 4th from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM for the gathering of food products for the pantry by the scouts.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. And I, we also thank as a Select Board, Mr. Winkler, for his time in assisting this, this project and working with the Boy Scouts of America. Next on the agenda would be the, another obstruction, an application for a permit to obstruct by the Milford Knights of Columbus to participate in this annual Tootsie Roll Drive to raise monies to benefit the physically and mentally handicapped. They are requesting permission to hand out Tootsie Rolls and collect funds at the intersection of Route 16 and Route 109 on Saturday, October 14th, from 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM with an alternate, with an alternate rain date of Saturday, October 21st, 2023. The police chief has reviewed this request and has no concerns. And if you look at his application, Deputy Chief Tizino did actually stand for approved with no concerns. And there was also a, an email to Rick. Good morning, Rick, the Knights of Columbus Valencia Council here in Milford would like to conduct an annual Tootsie Roll fundraising drive on Saturday, October 14th, at the intersection of Routes 16 and 109. In the event of rain, they would like to schedule that for October 21st as an alternate rain date. Attaches our request, which he did. And that's John Kiesha, Rick.
Sisla.
Kiesha?
Yes, I think it's Sisla.
Sisla, okay.
I think, yeah.
Very good. Michael, Tom?
I'm going with Sisla.
Okay, you go.
You know what, I'm going to go with Sisla too. Because I can butcher names like, you know, I, I do believe, no, but, you know, this is again, another annual event that takes place without issue. And there was a concern many years ago, back in my time where, you know, they're out in the street, but no, the police department provides them with the cones, they don't step out unless the person.
I've worked it with the Lions Club. It's pretty well organized and we have not had any issues.
Very well. It's, it's, it works like a charm. They don't step out unless the person encourages them to do so and, and traffic still moves along. So I, I would recommend that we approve the permit to obstruct for the Tootsie Roll Drive, the Knights of Columbus, their fundraiser at Route 16 and, and 109, the intersection for October the 14th with a rain date of the 21st from 8:30 to 4:00 PM. It's already approved by the Deputy Chief because they have it down to a science. So they'll make sure that it's safe for everyone. So that's my recommendation.
Motion, Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Aye. And Mr. Sisla, I apologize for your name, but you should have seen what I used to go through in my day and tried to pronounce my name, Mesakelli. Okay? Thank you for that. Anyway, next on the agenda is an email from Leonard Oliveri. He's the chair of the Milford, that would, that would be the Milford Fair Housing, Ricky.
Fair Housing.
Fair Housing. And he's requesting that we appoint Michael Visconti to the authority to fill this vacancy. If I remember correctly, gentlemen, in the past few meetings, there was no applicants, I believe, to, to fill this.
Correct.
So Michael Visconti volunteered as well and, and I believe he did speak to Mr. Oliveri as well and that's why Mr. Oliveri is, is recommending him. Do I have a, a motion on this appointment?
I'd make a motion that we appoint Michael Visconti to the Fair House.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And make that unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is another committee that we're trying to fill. Ron Gray, he's chairman of the Vernon Grove Cemetery. He informed Rick that there are two vacancies on the trustees of the Vernon Grove Cemetery due to resignations. Attaches a memo from Mr. Gray, which is here. And he, and Ricky sent it to, has, has given us the, the memo. He says he received notice from Ron Gray, Chair of the Trustees of Vernon Grove Cemetery, informing him that they still have two vacancies on the trustees of Vernon Grove. In conferring with Town Council, the process to fill this vacancy is governed by Mass General Law's Chapter 41, Section 11, which provides in pertinent part, "If there is a vacancy in a board consisting of two or more members, the remaining member shall give notice, written notice, therefore, within one month of said vacancy to the Select Board, who, within that, the remaining members of such board shall, after one week's notice, fill such vacancies by roll call vote." Ricky would recommend that the Board announce at, at this meeting, September 11th, 2023 meeting, that there will be a joint meeting of the trustees of the Vernon Grove Cemetery at the Select Board next meeting of Monday, October 2nd, 2023, and that any interested person may apply to fill this vacancy. At that meeting, the vacancy can be filled with a roll call vote of the members of the trustees of Vernon Grove Cemetery that are present and the members of the Select Board. In addition, the Select Board must post notice of vacancy one week prior to October 2nd, 2023, which Ricky, you, you will do.
I will take care of that, yes, yeah. We want to try again, if you remember, some, three months ago, we did not receive any applicants.
I remember that, yeah.
They're hoping that this time that that will change.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that in quarter of Chapter 41, Section 11, fill two vacancies on the Vernon Grove Cemetery Committee. That we have a joint meeting on October the 2nd, at which time the two boards will come together and will vote to fill those vacancies. And that the Town Administrator will post that meeting and those vacancies one week prior to that meeting of October 2nd, 2023.
Great, thank you.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And make that unanimous. Thank you. We'll see them on October 2nd. Next on the agenda is a memo from Town Planner Larry Duncan, resigning as a member of the Industrial Development Commission. He's recommending that our Town Assistant Administrator and Economic Development Coordinator, John Chavino, be appointed to replace him on the Industrial Development Commission. And he has a, a memo, a memorandum to Rick, Town Administrator. Shortly after my being hired as Town Planner in December of 2001, I was appointed by the Select Board and the Board of Selectmen to be a member of the Industrial Development Commission. Subsequently, in January of 2006, I was elected Chairman of that Commission as a position I have held continuously due to present day. With the recent rejuvenation of the IDC and the hiring of John Chavino as an Assistant Town Administrator, Economic Development Director, it seems only fitting that I now step away from my duties as an IDC member. In accepting my resignation from my membership on the IDC, I strongly recommend that the Select Board in turn appoint John Chavino as my replacement on the IDC. I anticipate that my last meeting will be on 9/21/2023. Thank you in advance for your assistance in this manner. Gentlemen, it seems only fitting that when Larry's gone, that when he does leave that post on September 21st, that our Economic Development Coordinator and Assistant Administrator do take his place. He has the expertise and his time to, to do that as well. Do I have any comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we accept the resignation of Larry Duncan from the Industrial Development Commission effective 9/21/2023, and then I'll address the other side of it.
Sure.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman. Rick, you'll make sure he's, thank you.
And to thank for Larry for his time and expertise, that he was on that commission as, as well.
I'd make a motion that we appoint John Chavino as the, what was his position on the, is he going to be a member? He's going to be a member, not chairman.
Member for now that we organize on the.
He is a member of the Industrial Development Commission effective 9/21/2023.
Perfect.
And they will make their own decision.
They make their decision there. Michael?
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous. Lastly, on our agenda, we have a, a letter from Police Chief James Alvey announcing his retirement. Gentlemen, this is quite a long letter and it's a very quite impressive career that Chief Alvey has. What I would recommend is that I don't read the whole thing in full because a lot would get lost in translation. Only, only if you guys want me to read it, I'll read it. But again, what I was going to recommend to Rick is if you can put it on, online on our, on our website so people can read it and get, because it again.
It is online in our package.
Oh, fantastic. It's a very impressive career. And like I said, he has 40 years of policing experience. He started in August 23rd, 1983, and he worked himself up from ranks of a patrol officer, a sergeant, a lieutenant, a deputy chief and a chief. And to his knowledge, that was never done in the, in the Milford Police Department. He has gone, I believe with Tom's recommendation, to the National FBI Academy in Chronicle, Virginia. I think you, you appointed him to that, right, Tom?
I, actually, he had gone to the academy prior to my arrival.
Oh, okay.
So he's, he, you know, the thing with Jimmy, you know, where he says he's the first one that's attained each of his ranks, that's because the deputy chief came about.
Exactly.
So there were people, I don't want people to be misled that, you know, previous police chiefs, you know, my dear friend, Vinnie Liberto, he rose to the ranks as well.
Right.
But there was no deputy chief slot, so he would not have been the first one to climb each of the ranks.
Sure.
As they exist today. But nevertheless, you know, a very, very, very professional career, someone that loves his community, someone that's made a difference for people, grew up here, you know, didn't come from a whole lot and made a whole lot of difference for others. So, you know, Jimmy has been one of those people that, yeah, he was always there, he was always forthright, respectful, sincere and honest. He, I commend him for stepping up, you know, at a time when we asked him to. And I think he's done a great job. He, he'll leave the department to whomever this board selects come the 21st of this month, in really good shape. So that's my take on it. But no, I, I can't say credit where credit's not due.
Okay.
And even if it was, he's the one that went.
Very good. Well, thank you for that. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me stop by sending a very big thank you to Chief Alvey. Just a, a great human being. I had the opportunity to be at Chris's Corner with him a couple of weeks ago and just to have conversation with him about that. to have conversation with him about that topic and why we were there, and his real care and compassion, as former Chief and Selectman Olafland made reference to, to people, you know, he, he lives every day trying to make a difference in people's lives in this community, and you know, that's an example of, and people have heard me comment about promoting through the ranks, and Jimmy's an example of not only born and brought up in this community, so he understands the culture of this community, but he started his career as a patrolman and worked his way all the way to the rank of chief. Over those years, over those 40 years, he never lost touch or the feeling of the most important thing, and those are the residents of this community. And if you have the opportunity, like I have many times, to have conversation with the chief, it's very evident that he never, never forgot, you know, where he came from, and where he came from is a town called Milford, and he was proud to serve this community for 40 years, he was proud to be a member of the Milford Police Department, and like any department in any community, there were times where there was some, if you want to use the word turbulence, or some rough times, and he hung in there, and he went to work every day and did his job, did his job, and in the end, it got him to the rank of chief, and so, you know, he will be greatly missed, he won't be forgotten, and I know he'll be around, he'll be around, as we know, when we go to like the police memorial events, it's a great honor to see, you know, the former members of the Milford Police Department come back, come back, because they were proud to work in that department, and so, again, not to be repetitive, Jimmy, I just want to say thank you, thank you to your family for the nights and holidays that you weren't around because you had to, you know, work to protect the residents of this community, and after 40 years, my friend, you get to sit back and go fishing, I guess, but again, I just want to say thank you, and with that, I close, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, very well said, Michael and Tom as well too, and Jimmy, thank you, like I mentioned before, a very impressive career that he had, and we encourage residents to read this online, and you'll know what kind of chief that we had, and we congratulate Chief Alvey on his retirement, and we know that he has a great deal of love for his family, so we can spend more time with them as well, which is, we hope that he, that he, he does, and that he is, has a safe and happy retirement. He relaxes, like Mike just said, enjoys his family and anything else that he deserves, really appreciate all the time you put in and all you've done, thanks so much, and we accept his retirement?
I told him to go back to work.
Okay.
I know, I know his personality, so...
He will.
He can spend time with the grandkids, but he has to go do something.
Of course.
So, God bless him. He, no, he's done a good job, as you mentioned, Paul, you know, and as I said, he stepped up when we had to make a change.
Sure.
And he's done a great job in caring for this community, so I think, I agree with you, people have the opportunity to go and read what he wrote, because what he wrote, he wrote from his heart.
Sure he did, yeah.
You know, as you indicated, and I applaud you for bringing that up so that people do have an appreciation of his love for this community.
We should accept his retirement, is the most letter, a motion?
So moved.
I would second that.
And I make that unanimous, thank you, do the best to you, Chief Alvey. Anybody else have anything on the new business that I'd like to bring up?
No, I do not.
Ricky, I'd just like to bring up the tour that we had, myself, you, Mike, Arch Robber.
Yeah, please.
Okay, we were there on the 29th of, of August, it was myself, Rick, John Shabano, Michael, and three, three members, Rick, from the Charles River Watershed Association, and they were there, and we toured the, the lot where the plant was once, and there's some rubble there, and, but we also noticed some observation wells, which means that there were tests that were done for environmental concerns, and those observation tests go into the groundwater, and they, and what they, every now and then, there's testing to be done with the groundwater, you can take a sample from the wells and see if there's any contaminants, and if so, how much, and if it seems to be decreasing and whatnot. So what, what, how we left it was, John was going to call DEP and ask them to see how far were they with the testing process, and what the results were, if they have any, and where we, where we go from, how we move forward from there. In other words, what other testing would they require, and then we were going to get ahold of the owner to see what their plans was going to be in the future, and hopefully he'll have a report for us in, in the near future, so we can have at least some sort of pathway to where this, this, this piece of land is going now. Thank you. Thank you. If not, we're going to go to our next item, which is invitation to speak, none, nobody here, and nobody online, any correspondence that anybody get or have that they would like to talk about?
Yes.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to speak a little bit about, I'd like to send a thank you out to Scott Christofouli and the members of his department, as all of us know, there is a resident on, and help me, Rick, it's off of water, Mahew?
Mahew Slip, I believe.
Yeah, Mahew Slip, which is right next to Godfrey Brook, which as we know, was, we're waiting for renovations on, and unfortunately, because of the age of the brook and debris that gets in the brook, it can cause some serious flooding down there. And as you know, we've had some pretty rough rainstorms over the summer, and this resident, not in any way complaining at all, just concerns and reaches out to Scott or reaches out to whoever Scott leaves in charge at the time, and she always sends back correspondence thanking them for their rapid response to getting down there, even in foul weather, and cleaning out the brook, and so I just, you know, as I said earlier to, to Zach and to Jimmy, and I want to say to Scott and to the members of his department, thank you, it's nice to see when residents take the time to correspond, but it's nice to see that our, our department heads and our departments are there when our residents need them, and again, I just wanted to say thank you, it's, it's greatly appreciated, and it makes, sitting in this chair, I know I can speak, you know, for my other two members, it, it makes us very proud to be able to say that there are people in this community that are performing a function every single day that go above and beyond the call of duty, and I just want to say thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Michael. Next on the agenda is executive session, and we do have none, therefore, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Anyway, to the public who was tuning, who is tuning in, thank you very much for, for tuning in and have a good evening.